And they fell through. At this point in time, we're going to make sure that all the public improvements are done. And that's what we need, this money then from the bond that we took off of them. So this way it's put into a capital project so we can make all those, the remaining projects can be completed.
The bond was put up by the developer who went belly up and so it's not, it's not high for their money.
Yes.
And a follow-up on that, the lots have been sold, we were told, that they're sold.
All of the lots were sold prior to the company actually going down.
Okay, and there was a question last week from somebody stated, and we were asked, Mr. Hartzell, are the taxes being paid on those lots?
He did not give me an answer.
Let's get an answer from Mr. Hartzell, I want to get back to our resident.
Sure.
Okay. Go ahead.
Did you say the lots were all sold to the end unit, users?
Yes, well, the developer came in, they were making all the improvements, all the stormwater and the road, as far as the base part of the road was in, the water services, there were, the majority of it was completed already. At that time, they were selling the lots off saying that they were going to build for those people.
So when the development started. All the lots were actually sold?
Yes, yes, there was a lot of interest in that. And unfortunately with the hit that was in 2000, 2007, 2008 with the economy, at that point in time, that's when they went down.
So now all these lots will have to be resold?
No, they're property, there's people that own the lots. So once we go in and do our work, then they can start developing those properties.
Check on the taxes, Mr. Messinger.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public? I'm seeing none. Mr. Hammond, call a vote, Bill 20?
Bill 20, Ms. Moda?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Zappa?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Plaine?
Yes.
Bill 21? Bill 21, commence capital fund budget, provide for something on appropriation of $4,320. And this is resulted grant from Department of Conservation Natural Resources for the purchase of.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Plaine, Public Works, last week.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this one was recommended favorably unanimously to the full council.
Thank you. Any comments, Bill 21, comments from the public? Mr. Hammond, call a vote?
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Zappa?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Plaine?
Yes.
And Ms. Moda?
Yes.
Thank you. Bill 22?
Bill 22, commence general fund budget, provide for supplemental appropriation, $50,784. This is from numerous donations from the business community and universities. And it reappropriates $62,459 from Department of Justice Grant that was received in 2016. And appropriate by orders, 15303, but not expended. And the funds are to be used for the purchase of a simulator for training for scenarios.
Mr. Plaine, Public Works?
Again, recommended favorably, something that is very beneficial to our police department as well as other police departments. And I'll just ask Assistant Chief Strauss if she would like to elaborate on, or Mr. Messinger?
This would have been in public safety.
Public safety, yes.
Yeah.
That's a mistake, Mr. Plaine.
Yes.
Rather than, rather than I think over again. Chief Strauss is here, she can help.
Okay, the use of force simulator was through a grant. And most of the money we received is through a grant. And we also got donations from various companies in the city to purchase this use of force simulator for training for our officers out at the police academy. It puts our officers in real life shoot, don't shoot situations. And will allow us also to, more than likely, open this up for training for officers outside of the Allentown Police Department and possibly bring some revenue into the police academy.
Thank you. Mr. Strauss, comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public, Mr. Hammond, call a vote, Bill 22?
Ms. Zappa?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Plaine?
Yes.
Ms. Moda?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Bill 23?
Bill 23, commence the general fund budget, provide for supplemental appropriation of $94,061. Twelve cents from Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission for tuition and salary reimbursement from Act 120 Training. And that money can be used to reprogram the purchase of a driving simulator.
Thank you. Mr. Hendricks, I was in public safety last week?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this was voted favorably unanimously by the committee to be forwarded to the full council. And then Chief Strauss would like to comment on this?
Sure. This is money we received back from the state after we had put several of our Allentown Police Officers through the Act 120 Training. The last academy class, we got reimbursed for their salaries. So we decided to take that money and use it towards a driving simulator that again is going to be placed at the police academy to train our officers. We can also use that driving simulator to train other city employees. And again, with the forethought of possibly opening it up to outside police departments as a possible source of revenue for police academy.
Thank you.
Comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public? Mr. Hammond, call a vote, Bill 23?
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Plaine?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Moda? Yes.
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 And Bill 24, Mr. Hammond?
Bill 24, commence general fund budget, provide for supplemental appropriation of $11,000 from Lehigh County Drug Task Force. And that's for reimbursement of overtime.
Mr. Hendricks, in your committee last week?
Yes, Mr. President, this likewise was a unanimous favorable vote by the committee to go to the full council for a full vote.
Thank you. Mr. Strauss, would you like to comment?
Just this is money reimbursed back to us for overtime that was expended on a investigation that we assisted the Leah County District Attorney's Office with. And this is being paid back to us out of the county drug fund.
Thank you. Comments from my colleagues? Comments from, Mr. Plaine, go ahead.
Again, as I said at the committee meeting, just so there's full disclosure here, I work for the district attorney. I am in no way, shape, or form involved with any of the forfeiture money, so.
Thank you for clarifying that, as you did last week. Any other comments from my colleagues? Comments in the public? Mr. Hammond, call a vote, Bill 24?
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Plaine?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Moda?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Zappa?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Bill 25?
Bill 25, commence general fund budget to accommodate the reorganization of positions to allow our Public Works to operate more efficiently, pose a facilitated small reorganization in Public Works management by re-realizing the operation manager to the engineering bureau, placing an officer manager position in the streets bureau, and combining the building maintenance and appliance office.
And this also was in Public Works, Mr. Plaine, last week?
Since I took one from Mr. Hendricks, it's like gladly fielded him on this one, just to be fair. But no, it was recommended favorably. And Mr. Messinger, again, please, if you would give us a quick review of that just for me.
And you did send every council person, they were the motivational chart that Mr. Plaine asked for last week?
Yes.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Plaine.
Basically, it's utilizing existing talented personnel we have in the department to meet the existing needs of Public Works.
Thank you. Comments from my colleagues? Go away from Ms. Zappa. Now, we'll go to the comments from the public. Comments from the public, seeing call a vote, Mr. Plaine?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Moda?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Green?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
And we did Bill 26 earlier, let's go to Bill 27.
Bill 27, commence General offenses code, creating Article 715, nuisance abatement, by creating a progressive point system for recurring violations of properties used for business, commercial, or industrial purposes. And it creates penalty sanctions and allows for the closure of operations after successive violations.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond, in public safety. Mr. Hendricks?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Zappa, we're very critical in getting this legislation forward.
Yes.
And Mr. Plaine, and this, I was almost, I was almost there, Mr. Plaine.
Yes, this piece of legislation was recommended for a favorable vote unanimously by the committee. And it's going to give a valuable tool to the police department in furtherance of forcing business owners to be responsible. And I would like Chief Strauss to comment on it since certainly they'll be utilizing this to a great extent.
Yes, thank you. This is actually going to be a very useful tool for the police department. The DCR program for the residential properties in the city has been a good tool for us and I think has been working well. This legislation addresses the commercial and the business end of that that the DCR does not address. We've had numerous properties, commercial businesses over the years that have been trouble spots for us. And it gets to the point where our hands are tied as a police department and we're unable to do any real enforcement, unable to do anything to make the neighborhood a better place for the residents. We can cite businesses for noise and such, but when businesses are making thousands and thousands of dollars, a hundred dollar noise ordinance fine doesn't really seem to make much impact. So this gives us some teeth when it comes to enforcing some deordinances.
Thank you. Just, as I said earlier, Ms. Zappa, Mr. Hendricks, and Ms. Moda, I commend you for pushing this forward. We've been at a few, Mr. Hendricks and myself, we've been at a few crime watches and block watches. And Mr. Hendricks explains it, and the crime watches and block watches, they think it's fantastic legislation. So that's a good start. Comments from my colleagues about Bill 27? Hi, Mr. Green, go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure that we get this information out to the community, maybe where we can. Especially in the multi-faceted community, that we have diverse communities and might be an easier way to work to this use. Because I did, we had a couple of calls into last committee meeting, and people really were not very aware of what's going on. So this is going to go into effect and as many, as much as we can, get it out there. You know, probably in Spanish radio as well, there's a lot of Hispanic businesses in the city now. And many of them don't come to see the council unfortunately. And they don't know, you know, they may not be aware of what's going on, what this is going to do for them. Because it can effectively close their business, it might be their livelihood. So I just want to make sure that we do a thorough job in getting this information out to the community and use our various departments together, in addition to getting out to the papers and etc.
And that was a concern of ours on the committee. We were making certain that, you know, we've been going to the crime watches myself. I know the police department has somebody at all the crime watch groups, and they're speaking about it. And we could certainly do that. I'd be more than happy to ensure Ms. Zappa would also.
I can, I can help you out.
I agree with you, Mr. Green. I believe that it is extremely important that we educate not only the Latino community, but the community as a whole. I think that we should just, we should, we should educate because it could get, I believe, confusing. And I think that that was, that was also my main concern, letting people know about the police system and any questions that they, that they might have. Because I think that our goal, it wasn't to, I guess, close down all the businesses. I think that we, you know, what we wanted, I guess, when we thought about doing this was a better quality of life, you know, for everyone, you know? And we weren't really planning to close, you know, businesses down. I don't think that this was really the purpose of doing this, this law, you know? Thank you.
I think it's important to note that this is not to penalize any responsible business owners. It is for those business owners who time and time again refuse to follow the law and refuse to deal with quality of life issues. I can tell you, many times our police department is called to some of these establishments at the end of the night when they're letting out, and every single unit available is at those locations, which is unfortunate for the rest of the city. Because at those times, the rest of the city is left uncovered. So again, it's most important to note, this is not for responsible business owners. It's for those who again, and it's not going to happen with a one-time violation. It's going to happen from repetitive violations and serious violations. So, thank you.
Ms. Zappa, go ahead.
As Chief Strauss pointed out, and this is how this all got started, with constituents constantly being under, under fire, actually, a lot of times, there, it's noise, it's complaints, it's fighting, it's rioting. And we never had a hold on it, there was nothing we could do. We go to the police department, there's nothing we can do. And so we created a law. And the law basically, as Mr. Hendricks pointed out, is for the safety of the people in Allentown and also other good business owners. I myself am a business owner. I want people to come into Allentown and not have the perception that they're going to get shot, that there's problems. I want people to come into my, into our city knowing that it's safe. So this is not only going to help the citizens out there, it's going to help other business owners. Because people will come into our city, why should we be penalized? Because these bars or these establishments don't know how to behave or don't know how to get the right security. So, once again, I want to say I'm very, we are very proud of this law. And the main thing is, I know how excited the police department is out of it. Because now there can be something done. If you don't know how to take care of your business, I'm sorry that we're going to have to close you down. And it's, and that's enough, this is something we don't want to do. We want to train you. And also, we are going to make sure that in the beginning, to address your question and Mr. Green's question, is that we are going to do a lot of warnings, if they're minor, nuisance, loud music. I think what we're going to do is give a lot of warnings out in the beginning and let them know, this is a new law. You must comply, and we suggest you do this and suggest you do that. So that people know what's going on, even if they're not reading it, they don't know about it, they haven't heard about it. But that's our plan, is to, is to give a lot of warnings out. And the police department to communicate with people and say, this is the new law, and this is the way it's going to be. So there won't be many excuses out there that I didn't know. Because we planned to warn them before we, now, if there are violations, there's guns and large violations, you're just not going to be talked to, you're going to get, you're going to get the points. So we are concerned that people know what the bill's all about. And hopefully they'll have a safer city with responsible business owners.
Thank you, Ms. Zappa. Mr. Plaine?
Yeah, just a follow-up on this, Mr. Green. I mean, the city has a list of everybody that's in the city, and we tie this to their, their business. The license, we can't say they're going to get it.
Absolutely right. That's good. Anyone else on the council or the public?
C.R. Ramos, Bill 3025, Mahoney Mountain Road, Penn Springs, Penn Township. One reason I want to get up is because it does concern me of having a law that does not treat every Allentonian equal. That is a concern. Congressman Hendricks, you said when, on Saturday night or Friday night, when every unit is down to say on at Fourth and Hamilton, that that's an example of irresponsible business owners. When we have an event, there's pretty much every police officer that I, within his own duty, on the arena block. Are we saying that the arena managers are irresponsible owners?
No, that's not true. That's not the case. That's not the case when the unit has an operation.
We flood the zone, we flood the zone with police officers, as we should. Because many thousands of people are coming into that part of the city. So when a business is operating, whether it's Main Gate, whether it's Club Dubai or Cash 22, and you have hundreds of people coming through, maybe 500 people per night.
I'm going to make the difference with you, I can't compare the arena with Club Dubai.
When you're talking about hundreds of people coming together, it's not a club. You're talking hundreds of people coming together. And as I understand, some of these owners have asked for police presence and have not received it. Club Dubai, from what I understand, from reading in the news, two of their bouncers are all fully police officers. What more can a business do than hire all fully police officers? So what I'm saying is, I want to make sure that we have an equal law that's going to treat every business owner in Allentown equal. And if you have a business that draws a lot of people, and they ask for police presence, that is provided the same way that the arena is provided police presence when there's a gate night. And I think that's what a lot of people are seeing, that in order to a arena law, you provide all the police presence required for some of these other areas because they might be undesirable. You say, well, we're not going to provide that police presence, even when they ask for it. So I want to make sure that we have an equal law, a law that treats people equally. And that if you're going to penalize a business on Fourth and Hamilton or a business on 19th and Tillman, there was a case, I think it was Volpi's Bar, where someone left and crashed on the airport road and they wanted to sue the bar. And it's like, what's thirty blocks away, how much, what, how, where does my responsibility end? But we want to make sure that we're treating everyone equally and the same. You know, this happened, someone brought up, you know, when someone left your bar and started pushing air conditioners into residential houses.
I called the police on them, I know, you know, every week I get this brought up about, about the person that, wait a minute. And I called the police, when you call the police, if you have a problem at your establishment, you can call the police. That's what a responsible person will do, they will call the police.
These people are asking for police presence and are being denied the police presence.
Do you know where the Sands is in Bethel? Do you know how large and how many people they get in there? They've never had a shooting, a knifing, a crime committed at all, and do you know why? They are loaded with security, the Sands in Bethel. Loaded with, you go there and see how the security there, with higher security, that's the point. Hire, you need to hire security. If you have three, four, five, six hundred people, you need security for quality control.
The taxes paid by people in this city should be, you know, where I can know that my city is going to provide the presence that I need. I want to just give you, if you don't mind me, a comment.
I just want to correct you, I want to keep Volpi's a good name out there. It was not Volpi's Bar.
Yeah, I, I.
It was Sturgis. It was not Volpi's Bar, okay? I just wanted to make.
Sorry, I just know, because you know, Volpi's Bar, we've been trying for. I just know. With the issue of unequal enforcement of laws, my brother Tim started speaking here several years ago. The first time we spoke at council, right, we actually stopped giving our address many times, many years ago. Because we were afraid of people targeting us. My brother spoke here three times. The first time he spoke, someone decided to pour cement down the exhaust vent of our house, right? You know, it was kind of a fluke thing, somebody decided to do. But the second time we spoke, we got a ticket for having the recycle bin neatly placed on the front porch, right? And you would say, hey, well, we had this ordinance, you know, not to have things, you know, indoor furniture on the front porch, but.
Sir, not Mr..
If you don't mind, just humor me for a minute.
No, 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 Mr. Ramos, we need to address Bill 27.
I'm asking you to humor me because I want to give you an example of unequal enforcement of law.
I will give you.
I want to give us examples, but then you're asking for unequal enforcement. You know, you're asking for. Diane Tebbs spoke here for like eight minutes.
I will, I will.
So I would ask this one more time.
I will, I will give you, I want to give you two minutes, because we go way back, I'll give you two minutes.
So my brother got a ticket for having the recycle bin on the front porch. Patrols cropped, right, got the ticket right fine. The neighbor had kitchen candy on his front porch for a year, no ticket. So that's what I don't want. I don't want a law where you have some businesses being penalized and other businesses not, where we like them.
That's not going to happen.
I know what you're saying.
It's not going to happen.
I'm sure you were telling me.
We have our solicitor here and we could give you, did you read it? Did you read the ordinance?
I, I did go through it, I did go through it. I understand what you're saying, I understand.
Well, obviously you don't.
But I'm giving you an example of unequal enforcement of the law, just on the porch ordinance. And you're telling me that, no, 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 we're going to be faithful to the language of this law, and we're not going to be unequal. Right? So I'm just warning you all that I do not want to see in Allentown an unequal law.
You can challenge it. There'll be, there'll be a law that you can challenge this, you can challenge it in court, you can challenge it all you want.
Yeah, I'm.
And that's what, that's what the law's for, you can challenge it. Thank you.
I think it's important to your time that this will apply to the arena, to a car wash, to any bar business or establishment.
And I hope it does. I hope it's equally enforced throughout the city. And that three years from now, we don't come to find out, well, some businesses were penalized and other businesses we just ignored. That's what I'm saying.
I have the utmost respect for our police department, and I can guarantee you they will do the best to their ability.
Yeah, I'm actually not worried about the police, I'm more worried about the bureaucrats' side of it. I have a lot of bureaucrats in our police as well.
No, no, being violations, they'll be the ones reporting it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ramos, welcome.
Tim and Edros, nine, almost another day, Fort Tim, I'm slumming. So I took the ordinance, I sent it to one attorney friend of mine, and he looked it over. And I'm just going to share with you some of his notes. He said, "I have the most concern with Section 17.03 because of difficulty approving the connection of activity that occurs off a particular property to a nearby property. Points may be assessed against property owner or tenant if the nuisance behavior occurs on the surrounding sidewalk street or property and is traceable to the owner." So in other words, at what point, just because someone said, yeah, well, it came from there. Well, how do you know, how do you know, you're just taking the person's word? And again, with the example, and I know the clubs are the hot topic right now, but we know that there's things that happen all over the city that go unreported every single week. I know personally, we have three fights that happened over the weekend at bars. Nothing obviously was reported. A couple of weeks ago, there was a riot at Main Gate, that was reported. So, you know, this is the problem. Is it just, let's focus there because those businesses don't exactly fit the aesthetic we want to promote in the new Allentown, as many of you continue to say. So he also said, "I am also concerned," he said, "since 17.04, which was the standard of proof required to prove a nuisance violation has occurred from the criminal standard of proof beyond reasonable doubt to the lesser." So he, this is an attorney who's raising red flags. So he says, "715.04, a conviction not required for purpose of dissection. A conviction for an offense in a court of competent jurisdiction shall not be required to establish that a specified violation of law has occurred and added building or construction dwelling in a place. Instead, the city shall be required to approve a specified violation by a preponderance of the evidence." He said, "I'm also concerned about Section 17.05 because it authorized the city to immediately close a business property upon finding of a violation by mere preponderance of the evidence. That this may constitute a taking of the property for all practical purposes upon lower standard of proof than in a criminal case." So he's already raising with issues with constitutionality of this ordinance. So it can be constitutionally violating the rights of our business owners because they have property rights. So if we're going to do that, well, look at what you're saying. Okay, so we threw an ordinance, and because this is our, our, our goal, what we want, what our intended purpose is, but we're going to violate your rights. See, and that's where we have the issue. So again, using Dubai as an example, there was a shooting in the alley. There was a problem that started inside the club, and I don't go to Dubai, I don't know the owners. I spoke to people who know the owner, the owner actually did not feel urgent to respond to me. But I spoke to 24 other businesses who did not show up today, some because they couldn't afford to close their business. And as you can see, Dave Safari is not with me tonight because he said, brother, I feel it's going to go to anyway. So what I'm encouraging all of you to do tonight is not to scrap it, I'm not asking you to scrap it. I'm asking you to table it. Let's give us more time. In the week and a half that I had between the last time being here, I spoke with 24 business owners, educating them on the law. Once we get to the point of, well, some.
Once we get to the point of, well, somebody, the, the basic understanding, a customer leaves your business, starts a problem, it gets, you know, they find that they came from your business. You can be held responsible. All of them, they're like, no, how am I responsible for what they do? And what I want to caution all of you is that we cannot continue the way we do at the federal level to eliminate personal responsibility. The people, the customer, if I'm a customer at Candy's Bar and I leave and go crazy and do whatever, that's all it is. And I know you want to cut me off and you, maybe some of you are tired. I've been up at work since three in the morning. I am exhausted.
A job.
I see her tapping the, the, her wrist.
No, well, just finish your statement and, and we'll dialogue. It's, it's a dream in your head.
And, and that's, that's all I'm saying. So I'm asking that you table it for the moment, allow me and other community members, you and you just expressed people calling you and were concerned about the ordinance because they did not know. Let's do a better job, let's inform them and open it up for certain amendments. Because if it violates constitutional, uh, constitutional rights of our residences, we open the city up to lawsuit.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Any comments from my colleagues, from Mr. Reynolds?
I would just say, there's, Mr. Reynolds, we spent many months working on this. We've had numerous people, we've had every entity at the table, including the district attorney's office, solicitor's office, and this has passed legal muster. I beg to differ with you about the constitutionality of it. And believe me, nobody's rights are going to be violated. They'll be treated equally across the board. Again, this puts the onus on property or business or commercial establishment owners to just be responsible owners. And if they're not, then they will be dealt with accordingly. And we will do the best of our ability to make certain that everybody knows about this. And they'll have plenty of time. This won't go into effect for thirty days after we pass it.
What, that will be on May twenty-sixth?
By the time for Memorial Day, we hope, the beginning of December.
Again, you're voting on something tonight. And if you voted it tonight, you're giving people across the city. Let's remember, we have a hundred, twenty thousand people.